Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, April 6, 2022. The time is 6:30 PM, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver is absent. Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Jollette?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Viviano?
Here.
All members are present except for Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note a correction that needs to be made to the supporting documentation for Agenda Number Eight that is on Consent Agenda. It's under Parks and Recreation Department. The documentation provided in the packet indicated that the cost for the postage for the mailer to go out was $7,721.16, when in fact that number should be $5,519.81. So it's actually a savings. Also, I just want to point out to the members of the board in front of you is the resolution, which is Agenda Item Number 14. There was an amendment to the language from the packet resolution. I also emailed all the board members with the revised resolution. The one in front of you is the one we will be voting on this evening, and we will read the resolution for the residents to hear and for the board members to hear as well.
Thank you, Clerk Posey.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Discussion? Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the agenda. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Jollette, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item Four, Approval of the Previous Meeting Minutes from March 23, 2022, including the closed session meeting minutes from March 23, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Cusmano supports.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment. This is for agenda items. If there is anyone present who wishes to comment, please make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the screen. If there is anybody participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand, and you will be called upon. Roger, is there anybody?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing that there's no one wishes to comment, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Oh, sorry.
Trustee Lucido, get that? Okay. Any discussion on the consent items? We have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item Nine, we have a request to adopt a resolution, to adopt Resolution Number Two, to schedule a public hearing, Number One, for the Chelsea Park Drive, Newcastle Court, and Amesbury Drive Road replacement, a special assessment district. This is SAD Number MA101-P. So moved. Mr. Van Tiflin, can you give us some background before we have our...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. We've reached a point in our special assessment district process where we need to schedule the first of two public hearings. We are recommending the May 11th board meeting for that public hearing. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion? Okay. We have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido. Clerk Posey, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, Treasurer Jollette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Moving on to Item Ten, is a request to approve a position description, Recreation Programmer One. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Carl?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. The Parks and Recreation Department has requested from the Human Resource Department to create a position of Recreation Programmer One. This is a newly created position, which upon your approval will be negotiated in the Mape Collective Bargaining Unit with myself and Mr. Tabaka. I believe the job description is in your packet, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Mr. Carl, can you give us some background on why we need this position?
Yes, so, a couple of things. Well, we have a heavy workload, to be truthful, for our programmers. Things are booming. But the biggest thing is, we want to make a step in the right direction of increasing our senior citizen program. Our current person will be leaving in June, and then we're also going to be opening up the dog park sometime this year. So both of those responsibilities, as well as assisting in special events, would be something for this person to do.
Thank you, Mr. Carl.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Carl, my understanding is that this full-time position would essentially take the place of what had been a part-time position. Is that correct?
That is, well, partly correct. They'll be doing other duties besides that.
Right. So it will take over those duties and some additional duties, and that...
Correct.
A good portion, or somewhere in the neighborhood of half of the position we paid for, we anticipate using community black grant development funds?
Correct. We can use the black grant funds for anything that this person does for the Senior Citizen Center.
Okay, great.
Can't do anything for the dog park or the special events.
Even if they're senior dogs?
Even if they're senior dogs.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, we will be using that same amount for that.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none. We have a motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Jollette, to approve the position description of Recreation Programmer One. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Moving on to the conditional, number eleven, is a conditional rezoning, residential multiple family, low-density, which is R2L, to general commercial, C2, which is located on the east side of Romeo Plank, one-quarter mile north of 23 Mile Road. It includes portions of parcel ID numbers 0817-426-003 and 0817-402-005. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board. As you mentioned, these are parcels along Romeo Plank. Most of you would know them as the former Wade Nursery site. This is a conditional rezoning from the R2L category to C2, and it is for the portions of the property east, excuse me, west of the river. The actual legal description is in your packet. Some of the conditions that they are putting on themselves for the use of this would be the use as a landscaping company, which is similar to what had been there before. There are some additional landscaping requirements along the property lines and along Romeo Plank Road. They will be installing a pathway that would be consistent with what we have, the rest of Romeo Plank, as well as paving their driveway. Our staff is recommending approval, and last night at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion?
Just one question, if I could. I know Wade Nursery was there before, so it was a very similar type business. Are there any other things that they're going to be offering as part of their business that are going to be, you know, much different than what Wade was offering?
Well, I wasn't here when Wade was here, so I'm not exactly sure what Wade offered, but they do landscape services, you know, residentially, commercially, and they do grow some of their own trees, and I think their intent is, eventually they'll open that up to the public to come in and buy those. But I think early on, their intent is just to grow for themselves, to do their landscaping.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the conditional rezoning for parcels, portions of parcels 0817-426-003 and 0817-402-005. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item Twelve, we have a request to adjust the election inspector compensation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Clerk Posey?
Thank you, members of the board. In 2020, during the pandemic and COVID, you know, COVID-19, we struggled to fill all the required positions that we need in our precincts and polling locations. And this year, we're starting our recruitment efforts, and we're finding that we're falling a little short on getting eager people to work elections. So with the current rates that our surrounding communities are offering their election inspectors, along with the average minimum wage being $15 an hour, I'm proposing that we increase a few of the positions, they were highlighted in the packet, that were falling short and below what our surrounding communities were offering for those positions. This will at least keep us competitive, as you don't have to be a Macomb Township resident to work on Election Day in the precincts, so that we can continue to maintain the skills that, the skill set that we have for those that have worked with us in the past, and hopefully recruit some new additional hires. And I anticipate, it's hard to give you an exact number as to what this would cost, because I don't know how many people will actually get, but if I were to fill the precincts appropriately to my satisfaction, I would anticipate it being approximately a $10,000 increase, and I have budgeted for it in the next fiscal budget year.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to adjust the election inspector compensation. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item Thirteen is a request to establish the polling locations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Clerk Posey?
So pursuant to Michigan election law, MCL 168.662, it requires the legislative body in each community to establish polling locations for use at all elections. The 2020 census and subsequent redistricting process provide communities with the opportunity to create new precinct boundaries and polling locations. The Macomb Township Election Commission on March 23, 2022, met and established 35 voting precincts for use as required per MCL 168.661 subsection three. The township board is now tasked with establishing the polling locations for the 35 precincts previously approved by the Election Commission. The Election Commission is comprised of the supervisor clerk and treasurer. The attached listing details the proposed polling locations and precincts assigned to each location. Every registered voter will receive a new voter identification card to inform them of their new legislative district numbers, precinct number, and polling location. An extensive public education effort is planned by my staff and myself to inform voters of their new polling location. In addition, just to let you know, what we worked diligently on was creating what we're now calling them election supercenters, so that we were able to work with the school districts to provide us more space, so that we could put as many precincts in one voting location as possible, which helps me to reduce the amount of staff that I need on our end to troubleshoot in those areas. So that was a bonus for us. It'll be less footwork on Election Day, and I think it will help us to resolve any problems quicker, should they arise on Election Day.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. When does the clerk's office anticipate the voter, new voter IDs to go out?
So we have to, the deadline, we're going to submit all of our information to the county by the end of this week, and then it goes to the state of Michigan, which then has to import all that information into the qualified voter file. So as soon as all that happens, we will be mailing them out. We are hoping within four weeks, they'll all be mailed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. We got a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to establish the polling locations. Members, please vote.
It froze up there. One second.
You good though?
Yeah, I'm good now.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Item Fourteen, is a request to adopt a resolution in opposition to the imposition of Highland Park's water and sewer debt on Macomb Township residents and businesses. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
So, thank you, members of the board. Before you tonight is a resolution. It's in your, as Clerk Posey, we did some amendments based on some input and edits from Trustee Cusmano. Basically, the resolution calls for the township to withhold any portion of the billings for water and sewer services that represent Highland Park's debt. This will take effect July 1st with the new water rates. Those funds will be put into escrow until such time as a resolution is reached between Highland Park and the Great Lakes Water Authority. With that, I'm going to yield the floor to Trustee Cusmano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution in opposition to the imposition of Highland Park's water and sewage debt on the Macomb Township residents and businesses. Heading A, Legislative Findings of Fact. Whereas Great Lakes Water Authority, formerly known as Detroit Water and Sewage Department, is a supplier of fresh potable water, fresh water supply here and after, and the sanitary sewer treatment here and after sanitary sewer provider to local units of government throughout southeastern Michigan, and whereas Macomb Township is a local unit of government that receives fresh water supply directly from Great Lakes Water Authority as a primary customer for resale and distribution to its residents by way of a long-term water supply contract, and whereas Macomb Township is an indirect and/or secondary customer of sanitary sewer of Great Lakes Water Authority through its primary customer, Macomb County Department of Public Works, by and through the Macomb Interceptor Drain District, which then bills Macomb Township monthly, and whereas the state of Michigan has and continues to have a direct role in the Great Lakes Water Authority providing fresh water supply services and sanitary sewer services to the city of Highland Park, and whereas the 2000, in 2012, the state of Michigan requested, and then the Detroit Water and Sewage Department, now Great Lakes Water Authority, to provide emergency water services to Highland Park because the state of Michigan determined Highland Park's water treatment plant was creating a public health risk to its residents, and whereas on November 12, 2012, the state of Michigan stated that the repairs to the Highland Park water treatment plant were to be completed in three to four days, and in the interim, fresh water supply and sanitary sewer service to Highland Park was transferred and serviced by Detroit Water and Sewage Department, and whereas neither the state of Michigan nor Highland Park repaired the pertinent Highland Park water treatment plant, and it remains closed, inoperable, and shuttered to this day, and whereas Great Lakes Water Authority's sanitary sewer treatment charges by and through the Macomb Interceptor Drainage District have and do include Highland Park sanitary sewer, past due bills, some reduced to judgment, delinquent, and bad debt that are passed through to Macomb Township for its respective share, and presented ostensibly as a quote "cost of service" close quote, attendant to the maintenance of Great Lakes Water Authority system under Michigan law, and whereas Macomb Township's respective share passed through from the MIDD for Highland Park's debt for sanitary sewer is $960,300, and whereas Highland Park has paid less than 1% of their fresh water service charges since 2012, and whereas, since 2012, Highland Park has accumulated $54,233,700 in debt to Great Lakes Water Authority for both fresh water and sanitary sewer service, and should Highland Park's delinquent payment pattern continue and projected usage levels remain constant, this debt will rise to $60,977,600 by the end of fiscal year 2023, and whereas Highland Park debt has now been allocated by Great Lakes Water Authority to 87 other Great Lakes Water Authority member communities, including Macomb Township, and whereas the $54,233,700 water and sanitary sewer debt Highland Park has accumulated since 2012, $1,403,900 was already paid by Macomb Township residents and its other water and sanitary sewer customers ostensibly billed as a quote "cost of service" close quote, and whereas the $60 million, whereas of the $60,977,600 debt that will be accumulated by Highland Park's refusal to pay for their water and sanitary sewer by the end of 2023, a total of $1,581,420 have been allocated to Macomb Township to be paid by its residents and other water and sewer customers serviced by it. I yield to Madam Clerk for a formal resolution.
Section B resolution. Therefore, be it resolved as follows. The Macomb Township Board of Trustees hereby demands that state of Michigan and the Great Lakes Water Authority do not require Macomb Township and the 86 other paying member communities to pay for the city of Highland Park's debt to GLWA, and declare that debt to be not due and owing, both retroactively and prospectively. Number two, beginning July 1, 2022, Macomb Township shall withhold payment of that portion of water and sewer costs attributable to Highland Park's non-payment and place those funds in escrow while a just settlement of this matter is pursued. Number three, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees hereby requests the state of Michigan become directly involved in resolving this dispute. Number four, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees calls on the state of Michigan to create a system in which debts of non-paying water and sewer customers can no longer be charged to paying customers. Number five, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees hereby requests that its state legislators and Macomb County commissioners prevail upon the state of Michigan to provide a resolution of this matter that includes reimbursement of the $1,403,900 already paid by Macomb Township to cover non-payment by the city of Highland Park. Any and all resolutions in conflict herewith are replaced or repealed only to the extent necessary to give full force and effect to the foregoing provisions. This resolution is deemed servable. Should any provision, clause, word, or sentence be deemed unenforceable, the remainder shall remain in full force and effect.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add that I notified via email both the state Senator McDonald and state Representative York of the board's action, and they're aware, presuming that they got the email, they're aware of this action by the board. They have had no further communication with my office.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. There's no more discussion? Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Treasurer Jollette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. Moving on. Board, or public comment. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, you may approach the microphone. I don't see anybody present. If there's anybody participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand. Roger, anybody? All right. Seeing that no one wishes to comment at this time, we'll move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido?
Just one quick one about the resolution we just adopted. I'm glad we're moving so swiftly on this to take care of this problem, so kudos to the full-timers for putting this together, and Trustee Cusmano, I know, had a big part in that, so I do appreciate that. I do believe that Sterling Heights did something similar yesterday. I did read that. So I'm glad it sounds like we're starting to all work together to finish this problem off, so thank you for that.
Trustee Nevers?
Again, I seem to always follow Trustee Lucido with an agreement, full agreement, and great job, Frank, and our supervisor, and the full-time employees that worked on the wording of this. It was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cusmano?
I just want to tell the residents and the businesses of Macomb Township that personally I'm over the moon that there's action on the Great Lakes Water Authority. I've been arguing from both sides, now on this side of the dais, but for over 10 years regarding this issue with Great Lakes Water Authority and this cost of service issue, and how it seems to be so nebulous and vague that it can encompass things such as servicing the bad debt of other communities. So I am just so happy and looking forward to movement now that the political will seems to be forming, to take action to protect our residents and our communities against these types of excesses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Treasurer Jollette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've all heard in rhetoric in the media over the last few years, some people making the claim that water is a right and should be free. While water is free when it falls from the sky and other ways, it is not free to purify, to transport, to deliver, to clean, and so when somebody says, you know, "I shouldn't have to pay, water is a right," what they mean is, other people should pay my bills. What they mean is, I don't, I think other people should have to work, so I don't have to work to pay that bill. And I don't think that's just. So I think the resolution that we passed today, and I thank the supervisor, our legal team, and our trustee Cusmano for work on the resolution, goes a step toward establishing that, that there's no such thing as a free drink, you know, and people have to work hard to provide that service, and they shouldn't expect other people to work for them while they don't pay. So I'm very pleased with this resolution today.
Thank you, Treasurer Jollette. Clerk Posey?
I mirror all my colleagues' sentiments on the resolution, and I'm excited a lot for Trustee Cusmano, as even in my first term here, he's been pursuing and challenging Great Lakes Water Authority, so like, you know, commend you for your efforts, and it looks like something's actually going to be moving forward on that. With the approval of the polling locations this evening, it will result in some residents being assigned to different polling locations. Residents will now vote at 14 locations across the township, but not everyone's precinct will be changing, making it critical for everyone to check their precinct number and polling location ahead of time. In today's shortage of available workers, we were forced to create election centers, which maximize facility usage while reducing the number of people needed to adequately staff locations on Election Day. We know the redistricting is bound to cause some confusion, so we're making every effort to make it as easy as possible for them to get the answers that they need. We will send updated voter information cards to every registered voter's mailbox. Also, we've created an easy, user-friendly website, mtvoter.org, which has vote-by-mail polling locations option, and also on the voting identification cards, we got tech-savvy and added QR codes, where you could just put your phone over the QR code, and it'll take you right to the website, and you can check your polling location that way as well. So we hope that the inconvenience isn't too much, and we're going to do our part in continuing to inform the voters of the changes, but it will be for the, better for all of us in the future.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. As to the... As to the resolution tonight, I guess I want to thank my colleagues here on the Board, with special acknowledgement to Trustee Cuzmano, who has been fighting this fight probably much longer than the rest of us. Finally, I think all the communities and the public at large are becoming aware of some of the problems. Credit goes also to Candace Miller and Mark Hackel, who are railing Macomb County communities. We did sort of a press conference last week, and they've been in communication with my office and other community leaders regularly in the last couple of weeks, as we work to actively engage the state of Michigan to help solve this problem. And the only thing I want to add to that is, is it is really the state of Michigan that created this problem. The brief amount of history, and Tim, correct me if I get this wrong, is that when Highland Park's water system was deemed to be unpotable, that the state shut it down with promises to re, to rehabilitate it within two years. They failed to do that. They simply walked away and allowed this debt to accumulate over the last 10 years. They made promises to Macomb Township and our residents, and to Macomb County, and all of the Great Lakes Water Authority partners, and they failed to uphold that promise. So I'm asking for the Governor to finally step in and do what the state promised to do 10 years ago. That being said, I also want to remind everybody that we do still have a board appointment position for the Macomb Clinton, or the Clinton-Macomb Public Library. I'm still taking applications. I will do so through to, until Friday, April 8. And if anyone is interested, please contact my office. We also have Hazardous Waste Day, which is this Saturday, April 9, from 9 to 1 o'clock in the Town Hall parking lot. Please see the website for any details as to what can be dropped off that day. Township offices will be closed April 15, that's next Friday, in observance of Good Friday, so please be aware of that. If you have business to do, please come on the 14th. And that is all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee Cuzmano supports Treasurer Gillette's motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? There's a motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cuzmano, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.